So maybe to help here, and I'll ask others in the room if you can help me as well. But I'll just start by throwing out the first question. You know, obviously, you've got a lineage of planning for the county. I'm most curious about the Plan Howard 2030 document and want to know if there's anything in it that you think works particularly well or anything that you feel could be better so that when we write the plan this time around, we try to address those issues or opportunities.
Matt, when you spoke earlier, you were talking about, you know, sometimes how the plans can be in silos and how that can sometimes give a narrow focus is what I think. And so I like the idea, you know, I think the plan was great, but sometimes you get so focused in that silo, you're missing some of the bigger picture. So your idea and your thoughts to get out of those quote unquote "silos," whether we're talking about education, whether we're talking about community growth, just to broaden that.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other thoughts about the document today and maybe things you would change if you had the chance?
Let me make sure, is everyone off mute? There might be folks muted, Matt, let me see.
Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
There we go.
Yep.
Yep, Phil, go ahead.
Erica said, "I was in some of the workshop situation facilitated, a facilitated group of workshops with people from all parts of the county back in the 2012 thing." And it sort of started to move towards your more integrated approach. But agreeing with Erica, I think being on the planning board all these years is the silo seems to, all the silos were good and they were well-meaning, but they fight each other because they're in silos. And I really liked, you had that one thing that was more a 3D approach where all the components were constantly brought into every aspect of planning. And I think that's, I feel like that's one thing that's really missing in Howard County today. It's, and I think that we could improve that over the last plan, it would be tremendous.
Great, thank you.
Can you hear me? This is Tudy Adler.
Yes, I can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Um, I think I agree with Phil. I think the plan as it is laid out, as we have been using it at the planning board, and really, that's my only form of reference, so we have to take that into consideration too. But it is quite specific, and the folks that come to us on Planning Board Matters will really seek out the language that is specific to their particular issue. And I do agree with Phil, if we could just, if we could make it more dimensional, I think that would be so much more inclusive and so much better for moving forward.
Okay. Good, thank you.
This is Kevin Mack. Oh, no, I was just going to say, one of the things that I've noticed over time has been the desire of the planning board to want to hear more from the community and capture more of their information and implement it and integrate it within our decisions. And there are so many times where, as a planning board body, we're told, "Oh, no, you cannot take their information." There are so many steps that got us to where we are right now. We're beyond that, you can't listen to that, you can't judge on that. And so from a legal aspect, we are explained, you know, why we cannot. But as a guide, the Plan Howard 2030, I feel is fantastic, but when we go to rely upon the community's information that they want to inject into some of our decisions, it's like, oh, we're beyond Plan Howard 2030, and we're dealing with all of these subset issues at this point in time. You can't go back at this point in time and rely on Plan 2030. You have to get beyond that, and we're so far beyond that in your planning board decision. If there's a way for us to be able to use, I think you called it a Udo, some way or another of coming back and bringing the community back into the process, I think it would be helpful.
Okay, great, thank you.
I just add one more, oh, I'm sorry, somebody else is talking.
No, Phil, please, please go ahead.
Okay, yeah, this is Phil. One thing that I really appreciated in your kind of roadmap to how you're going to go about putting this thing together is, it was just, it was just in the time, 2012, with Plan Howard, is I think that your approach is going to bring a lot higher level of education. And the education is for the planners and for us, but it's also for the greater community because we're sort of a sounding board, you know, as Kevin just told you, of frequently frustration. I mean, people don't come to us and say, "We love what you're doing, we love what you're going to approve." They don't. And I think the whole idea of education is starting with education and then bringing education back into it. Well, if you decide there's no growth, what does that look like? If you let everybody do what they want, what does that look like? I mean, I think that, right now, I think our public is gobsmacked. There's been very, very tremendous, a very strong growth, there's a lot more congestion, we have transportation, and all I keep hearing is, "Isn't anybody guiding this thing?" Well, part of that, I don't know, but the other part is, we don't, they, people don't know how it works. How do you take all these little bits of information and create plan and create approaches to doing, you know, solving these problems? And I think, I think your process, it's very ambitious, but I think it starts moving into a direction of, you know, having everybody have that planning online game, which I can't wait to see. You know, it's great, great, great fun, but also a great education for everyone.
Thank you.
So this is Ed Coleman, and I'd kind of like to pick up where and amplify what I think Kevin was talking about. But one of the things I would like to see in the document is like a flow chart of where decisions are made and what their impacts are. And we seem to have a habit of to solicit more community input. In a well-meaning attempt, we keep adding more steps to these flow charts. What happens is that diffuses the public's input. You never know at one step, things actually apply. And it seems we also keep moving the goalpost on people where it gets down to the detailed plan, and it's like, oh, no, it's consistent with the Howard County plan, so you can't talk about that. But if you try to talk about it at the general plan level, it's like, no, that's, that's too detailed, you can't talk about that, now you have to wait later. And each step, there is no point where you can actually have the impact that you wanted. I was kind of an example, but to me, one of the cases was trying to plan the bike path in downtown Columbia. There was a general goal to have a bike path or a series of bike paths that connected A to B. But when it came to the individual properties, you couldn't make any decisions to do that. Even though they were done by the same developer, they were done at different stages, and I don't think it equates to being an optimal plan if there would have been a more holistic approach taken. And I know that's not just a general plan thing, but I don't know how we drive a planning process to reflect that so that community input is impactful and it's not just, you know, when it comes down to it, almost all planning is very local. And I get really upset when it is my next door neighbor that is doing something. When it's diffused farther out, it's hard, it's hard to get engaged, hard to get excited about something that I don't even know what it is for 10 or 20 years.
Yeah. Yeah, that is interesting. We deal a lot with that because sometimes we'll, we do plans that are 30 years out or 50 years out, and it's like, "I've got problems next week." Like, if it's not right next to me, I can't get my arms around that. So yeah, we do need to find ways to make this real to people, both, you know, in the long term, in terms of why they need to pay attention, for sure.
I like, I like the idea of the playbook approach too, because for a good example, a few years back, Howard County had some horrific floods. And then after that, we were asked to decide on projects that may or may not have impacted future flooding, but those rules hadn't been drawn up yet because our climate is changing. And it seems if there was a playbook thing, perhaps in the interim, before we could fine-tune regulations to the new realities, it would be really, it would be really an amazing thing. I don't know how you would do it, but it's a very intriguing idea to have a series of playbooks. Okay, if this happens, what would you consider? If that happens, what do you have to do? And it seems to me that everything is changing so fast now, the idea you put something in place and then you revisit it 10 years later, I don't think it works anymore. You know, it's, it's obviously an arbitrary timeline, but it needs, there needs to be something, as you said, it evolves, it has to be a living document. We can keep going back. We want to save the country road, but we need this senior living facility. How do we do with that? You know, so there are always these things that almost seem to be opposition to one another, but if you reconstructed how our education works and how we use the plan, maybe it could be a more effective tool to guide us through all the confusion that we're dealing, like the firehouse tonight. That's a good example. Of course you want a firehouse, we have a lot of growth, and there's going to be fire and safety issues, but if you put it there, it will cause congestion. So, you know, that's one of your little diagrams you have.
I found Laura's secret stuff. Oh, I can.
No, those are all good.
I put it next to Art. She has.
Lisa, you're not.
How about to keep us moving a little bit? And I think we've already started to answer some of these other questions as well.
I'm here for you.
What might, what might make your life easier at the DAS? I mean, are there, you know, some folks tell us they need very specific recommendations. Other folks tell us, "I just need the rules in place because every property has a little unique feature." Maybe it's got an environmental feature that is unique to that property, and so I really just want like the rules of the game, but I can apply those rules to the game of the matter at hand. Other places say, "No, it's much easier to avoid any confusion if we just spell it all out in here." Things like that. What if the DAS has, has given you problems? And we talked a little bit about it already, about maybe your process where the frustration of, "Well, the general plan already says it's okay, we can't mess with it," or, you know, what you've talked about already in terms of process. But anything else in the document itself, when you're literally making a decision on emotion that has really frustrated you?
I think this goes back to what you were saying, just not having it all out there and understanding from A to Z, understanding bits and pieces. And also, you know, some of that, I think you even talked about it, the history. Sometimes we're given a project, but we really don't even know the history of what was there before or where we move, where are we moving to? You know, some of us have lived in Howard County for a long time, but not necessarily understanding the history. But I would prefer if it was all laid out to bear instead of trying to figure out, "What are they really trying to say?"
Gotcha. All right, so be, be clear and forthcoming, gotcha.
Forthcoming, I like that.
All right, any others? Comments?
You know, it's, this is Tudy Adler. I was on the committee for, in 2012, to, to, and worked on this, the Plan 2030. One of the things that I did not realize at the time was that we were, the conversation was led and ideas were shared, but it was not necessarily explained to us in a forthcoming manner, that this was going to come through the state, like there were state laws that were going to be implemented. And that was very interesting to me because being on the committee and being in those meetings, and we were talking about various different things, and rain gardens and bio-retention, all of that was presented to us as a discussion. Well, what do you think about this? And what do you think about that? And how would people handle this? And it was never told to us at the time, and I was not aware at the time, that these were mandated by the state.
Okay.
So that sort of information, I think, is helpful. I mean, I just think it's important to know that. I felt it was, it was just very interesting that we were having these discussions about, you know, those kinds of things, and we were just not told that this is really going to be required by the state. So this is really going to be in the general plan because it's required by the state.
Okay.
So, so it's possible that even a member of a planning board could be put, have information put in front of them and not really understand that it's mandated by the, so, on some of their plans and programs. So I think that would be very helpful.
Okay, good, good. Anyone else? Or, I mean, we're kind of getting into question three too, a little bit, of, you know, when we look back, what's the positive outcome? When, how do we know we have success?
I'm going back, Matt, just a second, from the DAS. One of the things that has come up recently is a new policy that's been implemented. It's called Complete Streets. I'm not sure how much you've read into this, but.
Yep.
As far as when things take effect, if it's being passed by our council, it's been implemented as law, and then we still have cases in the pipeline that they've submitted all their paperwork, et cetera, and the developer is now saying, "Okay, everything's complete." It comes up on our calendar, and then we're looking at it, and the testimony from the public is, "Well, what about this? What about that? What about this? What about that?" And the Complete Streets piece that's now law is not actually in there. So we're wondering at this point in time, okay, if we pass this, how do we go back and readdress it if they did not comply with some of the new laws that were already there? And so if we can identify some issues in that respect, it's a little frustrating to make a decision in front of a room full of people that are complaining and telling them, "Well, I'm sorry, but this was done prior to the law taking effect." Yet you can see, it's very dramatic, that, you know, there needs to be a sidewalk between this business and this business so that these residents that are in between have a place to walk, or there needs to be bus stops, or there needs to be basically Complete Streets. So that would be something I want to have looked at also.
That sounds good, and it also kind of feeds in a little bit to what I was presenting earlier, that if we look at character, not just land use as the starting point, we start to comment on some of those things in the general plan, which gives you a little bit of a head start. And maybe it's like, if you're in these certain types of land use categories, these Complete Streets are like a priority. And really, the, the next challenge you have is when you have like a Complete Streets policy, and then you don't have enough right of way to accommodate all the modes, right? And so then the next question is, well, what is the priority? If this is a walkable place, is the sidewalk more important than an extra travel? I mean, that's the kind of stuff that you start to contemplate in the general plan so that there's guidance to these policies as you go forward. So we do try to prioritize the street based on the character that's being built around it. So yeah, we'll, we'll struggle through some of that during the year and a half to go.
Good, thank you.
There's something you, I guess you spoke to tangentially, but I know, I've worked for a big firm, and we kind of do these projects, and we always joked about, "Don't, don't tell us what you want, tell us what you need." And that's a hard thing to extrapolate from people, you know, and what Tudy was saying earlier, sometimes you're at one of these facilitated sessions, and they say, "Well, what would you like to see?" And, you know, people are all over the map, some people have really brilliant ideas, and other people are very, very specific about something they, they want. And it seems to me, if this is successful, it would be that we're satisfying the needs of the greater community of Howard County and not just necessarily, you know, putting out something, you know, just like the Complete Streets. What people need is that connectivity to be able to do it, not only in a car, but in a bike, to walk. And we, we keep coming up short because we are not really addressing the very thing that we said we wanted, these Complete Streets. So it seems to me that if we get closer to satisfying these needs and get away from, you know, "Well, I, you know, I would want a new swimming pool in our neighborhood," or, "I, you know, want the sidewalk on the other side," you know, they're kind of minutia that seemingly people can keep falling a trap, into a trap with. But that, that to me would be a positive outcome, that we ought to start, you know, we have some real needs, and can we get the general population to agree enough about groups of these needs, and they could see a commonality of where they would like the county to go?
Yeah. Good comment, good. Any others before we talk about, you know, kind of what is a successful process to you? I mean, if we're done in 2021 and we look back, I mean, what is, what are you going to deem, deem it successful? The document itself, the planning process, who participated? I mean, what's most interest to you so we can make sure we hit those?
So I'm, I'm not sure if this fits what you just asked, but when you talk about this playbook approach, it would be nice that if, I mean, you're kind of assuming that we're all playing the same game and we all have the same goal. And if your playbook is for playing football, I want to play hockey, and Phil's playing backgammon, you know, that the same playbook is not going to work for all three of us. But if the goal is to improve life in Howard County, how, how does, how do we advance to get that? If it's to increase environmental awareness, you know, how do you get there? So there's, there's multiple, multiple plays with everybody trying to get to, to a similar goal, if that makes sense.
Yep, and I think that'll feed well into what I'm hearing is support to at least investigate this idea of theme-based chapters versus silos. So we'll have to kind of struggle through some of that as well, you know, when we write the document.
This is Tudy Adler. On this particular question, when this process is completed and you're looking back, what would you see as a positive outcome? Experience on the planning board, we do get, you know, particular issues in front of us, and there's all different kinds of opinion sometimes, and some of it is quite passionate. So when we look back on the process, if we were able to bring community together in a collaborative manner that could come to terms with, maybe they don't get everything they want, but they can buy into and feel good about compromise and, you know, neighbors and different communities and different wants and needs getting done for the greater good and, you know, get some of the things that they want, but the exercise of working together with your neighbor in your community, I think, is probably, is going to be, is a, is a wonderful process, if you can pull it off. I believe we can in Howard County. I was, I participated with, we had an amazing experience many years ago with a professor who came, and we did a very large situation in, with Professor Anthony Nelson from Prince, Jersey, who, it was just a remarkable experience. We had a room full of probably 200 people, and everybody was sitting in groups, and everybody had a different idea, but everybody came away, you know, I mean, of course, it was a discussion, but that's kind of where it starts, and it's nice if you can keep that going.
Yeah, we try to talk about shared wins and shared losses. But yeah, we try, it's, it's nearly impossible to get, you know, unanimous consent on this thing, as you all know, from where you sit, but inform people, meaning when everybody gets into it and went through the process, and we've written the plans and points where we have a little something for everyone in it, telling them that you really like it off the plan and going to be a champion for that. So we've had some experience having to deal with that, we're looking forward to it.
I'll find the email. Great.
What about the last question? Groups that maybe traditionally don't come to your meetings, or groups that you know are in the community but don't really participate in the planning process or forward thinking that we can target for the on-the-table initiatives or other things we have?
Yeah, I think that might be one of your biggest problems because it's the people who don't show up are the underrepresented. And you'll notice as you meet with more and more groups in Howard County, you'll see the same faces over and over and over. And it's really great, but in fact, you're only hearing from a very narrow slice of the whole thing. And I guess there's many different formats that you can have for meetings or however, however you facilitate these, these charrettes, meetings, conferences, however you want to do it. But if you can somehow get to those other people, and maybe some lists of people who normally would not be in those meetings, you know, maybe the, there's some from the medical community or some, I don't know, education groups or something that are not, you know, there's, Howard County has a great deal of planning junkies, and they show up for everything too. And they have great ideas, but it's still going to be underrepresented if we can't reach those other folks.
Matt, I'd like to recommend that possibly reaching out to the different organizations that Phil just mentioned and asking if you can be part of their agenda for one of their meetings. And that ways, they're not going outside of their comfort zone, they're within their community, and you can get probably a better response from them and a group response at the same time.
Yep.
With Phil and Kevin, there's so many organizations within Howard County that have been established since Howard County's been around, and really tapping in to those members, these organizations, kind of going back to what I'm saying about the history, who know the history of Howard County, may not come out to planning board meetings, but have a lot of history under their belts, and they've been in these organizations, or they started these organizations once Howard County was started, to go after those groups. And like Kevin said, be a part of their ongoing monthly or bimonthly meetings that they have in the community.
Yep, no, it's been very successful, that's a good idea. I'm going to flip the. I'm going to flip the slide just to keep us going, but, you know, again, we can keep talking about any of them. But I just throw these other questions out to see if there's any other ideas. And I'm just going to go kind of clockwise. So the top left, do you believe that the organizational framework, meaning this preserve, enhance, transform and strengthen, is that effective for you? Are we off the mark? Do we need to change it? Remember, that was basically the highest level I can get to in terms of how we would try to do good by the general plan. And again, preserve was mostly about natural environment, agriculture, open space. Enhance were things like existing neighborhoods, existing centers. Transform is really about the redevelopment opportunities that you have and they're very strategic where they are. And then the strengthen is just how to keep a good thing going.
It would be great. I love the idea of those, those four things. It'd be great if somehow they were maybe enshrined in our, our process. So in other words, just, you know, does, is it, does it complement what's
I lost you at the very end. Can you all hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay.
I can hear you.
Phil, could you try repeating your thought?
Yeah, yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes, yep.
Okay, you can hear me now. Okay, I, I said, it would be great if those, those qualities, preserve, enhance, transform and strengthen, that we were ensconced in the regulations. Just like you say, is it consistent what's around it? Does it meet environmental needs? It would be really great. Is it preserving? Is it enhancing? Is it transforming? And how that be part of the criteria that groups like ours could actually draw upon to make better, better decisions. And I think, I think, you know, sometimes it's a perfectly good project, but it preserves nothing. It does just the opposite. It doesn't enhance. It may transform, but in the wrong way. So I, I like the idea of moving out of our traditional siloed approach, which is, you know, we're talking about, you know, water retention, roads, schools. And those are, those are important, but we're missing the big thing. And I think this sort of starts to address that. It'd be great if we could bring it into our regulatory process.
I agree with Phil. I like the preserve, enhance, transform and strengthen. Great framework.
Good, good. Sorry, as I'm looking down, it's because I'm taking notes really fast.
It's good.
Okay. Any other thoughts on that specifically? All right. Then again, going clockwise, actually, I'm going to, I'm going to go against what you said. Let's go counterclockwise. In the bottom left, we also have the process framework we talked about, which is kind of how we want to do our work. And again, we were going to focus on people and listening and trying to capture what is the best life to have in Howard County. The places, we're really focusing on physical form and character. And then the performance was that joke I made about visioning versus hallucination about like making sure these things make sense and are grounded and we can defend them. Anything with that approach that seems off base or, again, that's more process oriented?
Yeah, I think that one's a little more vague. I think it'd be harder for people to wrap their head around. I mean, maybe it just requires more explaining.
Gotcha.
I was thinking the same thing, Phil, because those, those titles might mean something different to everybody.
Yeah, I mean, we already have people, places and performance. It's not going very well. Yes, yeah. Yeah, yeah, you're right. It would be something different than anybody. It's too vague.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. And this won't actually make it in the document. It's more about our process. So, because, you know, we end up with too many frameworks in one document. They're confusing. What's the hierarchy? What do they mean? So when we were talking about preserve, enhance, transform and strengthen, that would make it into the document as a structure. I just want to be clear, when I'm talking about the other one, it's kind of how we're going to do our business. But we're not going to try and put yet another kind of cute slogan into the document, for lack of a better term.
Well, Matt, could you possibly make those subsets under each title? In other words, preserve and then focus underneath that under people, places and performance. Then under enhance, people, places and performance, transform, people, et cetera.
Yeah, I mean, let me play that out a little bit.
Yeah, for me, I don't understand performance at all. I don't understand what your, your metric would be for measuring that. I don't know if there needs to be another category or if that needs to be a different word. But I think performance just means too much to, to, too many people, that it means nothing.
It was a P word.
Yeah. Yeah, I think I just got on a roll with the Ps, you know?
Yeah.
We will look at that for sure.
Yeah, it sounds like, it sounds like an HR, it sounds like an HR promotion. So it makes me a little nervous.
Understood, understood. Okay, we will definitely kind of scratch our heads on that one between now and May when we come back. You know, maybe that we don't need to brand the process and the framework, too. And maybe, Kevin, to your point, we just sort of talk about how one implements the other kind of thing, but we don't make it its own thing that has to be branded and so on and so forth. So let us think about it. We'll see what happens. What about the top right question? Is there anything you feel needs to be added to the structure of the document to feel more confident in the process? Like, I know I went 100 miles an hour, but I tried to show you all the engagement, the fingerprinting exercise we're going to do. I just threw out the term scenario planning, you know, is there anything I can explain to that? Or just anything I can explain more or you, which then means I need to explain it more in the document?
My, I, I think I really liked the document and it's very, you know, rough framework. I would say my only, my comment would be perhaps it's a little too ambitious. You know, you, you, you might have too much going on there. But that, but that obviously remains to be seen.
Yep, okay.
For me, I just go back to the comments that I'm making before, where we have a stone of where this plays in the process and what the other steps of the planning process are.
Okay. Understood, okay.
We have so many different guidelines and guidebooks that are referenced in every plan that we look at. I am curious how that will be dealt with when we put this Plan Howard 2040 together. Everything from forests, land concerns, Complete Streets, the stormwater management, all those different documents that are referenced. How are they pulled together and put into here so it's a working document and not just, go see this, go see that, go see this?
Yep. So actually, I'm looking in the community right now where we literally wrote a section in the introduction called the, well, here'd be the county's library of plans. And we just decided and were very clear and just said, this is the general plan. There are five, like a parks and master plan, a transportation, all these things implemented and here's their relationship to each other. And it, it just provided clarity because to your point, you get buried in plans and, you know, you can't even see the, see the light anymore. So maybe that's something we talked about. It's just, and, and I think it comes back to your comment where you were talking about how these things all fit together from the decision-making process. Maybe we also talk about how does these documents fit together? Because you do have a lot of them, which is good. It means you do a lot of critical thinking, but you got to show how they are a complete strategy altogether.
This is Tudi Adler. You did mention this as a no-no thing, that the plan does not, is not meant for this particular topic. But as we are always asked to refer to guidelines and various different requirements, the, the concept often of personal property rights or real property rights is something that just completely gets lost in the conversation on, on some of our projects. I mean, it's amazing to me that people who are so intelligent just believe that guidelines are going to override real property rights. And I know that you did mention that this document is not for that. But I think once you give credence to all these other items, that I think it's only appropriate somehow or another, that that little reminder needs to be in there. Because if somebody is working on a particular plan or project, they will go to the general plan and they will seek out the verbiage that will support their project. I think likewise, we've got to have a same, we've got to have balance.
Yeah. Well, and just to make sure I'm clear with you all, since it's the first time we've got to speak together. In some other projects I've worked in, we've had to sort of define that, that context. And so what we actually do is, is try to identify all the things that affect growth or development and what it looks like and the shape it takes. So to me, you have several different categories. You have the market and demographics. I mean, people need to want to and be able to buy or, or whatever it is you want to build, certain housing types, those kind of things. The property owners have to be willing to want to build it. The developers have to be there to be able to develop it. The banks and the lending community have to want to fund it. And then the local regulations and policies, and those kind of five things are all at play at the same time for wind development. Like when you walk into that building or you walk into that community, all five of those things were at play to get to that point. And so we try to acknowledge the balancing act. And traditionally, the way we've written it is because some communities think that if they write their regulations, they, those regulations can supersede and kind of bend the continuum. And those continuums are very powerful. And so, you know, to I was saying earlier, you know, the regulatory documents that we write aren't going to change the market unless there are incentives or those kind of things also at play. So to the, to your comment, we fully acknowledge like all of those things going on. And we try, you know, we're, we're not trying to be utopian and ignore reality. So we will have those and if we need to emphasize them differently for this project, we will.
Thank you.
Yep. How about the last question for us here? Did we miss anything? Like, what, anything you saw that you were hoping to see that you didn't see? That so that when we come back in May, we, we have kind of a complete document for you or we've met at least your general expectations and then we can talk about certain details of it in May. But it would sure be a shame if you said, wow, we really wish there was a chapter on this and you didn't do it. I'd be remiss not to ask now so we could try to at least, you know, that old saying, how do you hit the bullseye if you don't know where the target is? I just want the targets today. We'll try to hit the bullseye for May. So anything you feel like completely lacking or that you were hoping to see for a general guidelines document? Obviously, we got a whole planning process to go through.
I thought it was more expansive than I was expecting to see, quite frankly. I'm, I'm, I'm pretty pleased with the scope of things that you're willing to consider and try to bring into some commonality, you know, which hopefully will end up in our next plan.
Yep, got it.
It's a very large undertaking and I applaud what you have thus far.
Okay, thank you.
This is Kevin. I'm just happy to see the amount of community outreach that you're getting ready to undertake. That's one thing that I think can never, we can never have enough community outreach, enough community input. There are some times when we look out at the audience and there's one or two individuals on a topic that we know there should be a lot of discussion. So I think as long as you're bringing the community in, a lot of those topics will be captured and implemented or, and set into this guidelines. Thank you.
Of course, thank you. Any other last comments or all kind of bring us home? And I don't know why 10 o'clock's a magical number to me, but I don't want to keep you past 10.
Yay, thank you.
All right. So just kind of bringing us home, can you still see my screen that I'm sharing?
Yes.
Okay. So just kind of what's next? I mean, obviously, we're going to take all the input. I've been taking notes. Jara Smith, who I introduced, he's been taking notes on the call as well. We will start writing immediately to try to get that draft general guidelines document done. We will come back to you in May and hopefully asking you to take action in May. Because we'd like to try to get to county council in June with your recommendation so we can get going. And really, you know, again, everything's up in the air a little bit, obviously with engagement and things. And so we're, we're trying to plan, you know, the best way plan and then adjust, adjust, adjust. But things like the board meeting and stuff take a while to do. And so we would love to just have this document, the confidence of this document so that the decisions we're making for the actual planning process that begins in earnest after this is adopted, we can get going. So we'd appreciate, you know, coming, having the opportunity to come back to you in May. And again, if you have any questions, we'll be ready. After that, I think we're done. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Great presentation.
Thank you all very much.
Real quick, man, one more question.
Yes, Ed, please.
Yeah, if you go back to your previous slide, I just would, what, what we're deciding on in May would be this is the framework to go forward. We're not adopting the general plan in May or recommending the general plan in.
No, no. In fact, you know, to be, to be quite honest, in most states we work in, this, this step in the process isn't there. This is a chance for us to make sure that we're spending our time, our, our money, our resources wisely as we go forward. But no, the general plan won't even be written until 2021 and then we'll start writing the draft. It's a long way off.
It was just a general, without context, this slide could be taken that we're adopting the plan in May. That's all.
Yes, okay. Yeah. I need a time machine to do that. I have to go forward and then come back. Yeah, no, we, that's a good, good point, though. We'll, we'll think, we'll modify that as we go forward.